This is the regular board meeting of Monday, January 4th, 2021. We are still in distance learning and so we are conducting this virtually. As we transition back into hybrid and in person, the board will transition back as well. So I hope that we continue to have good news when we're looking at the virus numbers and guidance from the state and we can transition back into in-person meetings and not have to come back to being virtual. With that, does anyone, will anyone make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Soderland moves.
Second.
Locan's card seconds. All right, we have a different order this meeting for roll call, so Tim.
You threw me off there. Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Dr. Soderland?
Soderland, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries. The third item on our agenda tonight, request to speak on the agenda. I have not received any requests to speak.
Or have I?
All right. Moving on to approval of the consent agenda that is in your board packet. Is there a motion to accept the consent, approve the consent agenda? Do we want to pull anything out? Do we have questions? I guess we can have some initial discussion. Hearing no initial discussion, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Dixon, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Hager, second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. Well now.
Chair Leonard, I was in the district office today and all the bills are in order.
Thank you, Treasurer Carlson. All right, we have a motion and a second. All of the bills are in order. We'll do that new fangled roll call again. Tim?
Locan's card, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Bill?
Soderland, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to the student spotlight and we have Lyric Rubel from the St. Peter Middle School.
All right, members of the board. We have tonight Lyric Rubel, a sixth grader at St. Peter Middle School. Welcome, Lyric. Lyric's teachers describe her as being kind, positive, determined, and somebody who has a work, oh, I'm sorry, a wonderful approach to life. And one of your teachers, Lyric, said that they wish they could clone you and have 100 of you. So very, very highly recommended for tonight's student spotlight. So in preparation for tonight's spotlight, I sent Lyric four questions. So Lyric, are you okay if I ask you those questions here and you kind of talk us through some of your responses?
Yep.
Perfect, ready to go. So the first question that I asked Lyric was, you know, so this has been a pretty unprecedented year so far. So amongst all of that, what has gone well?
Well, I think that my teachers, just like the teachers have done a great job of keeping everything online very organized and kind of having a great communication with students in what they're like emailing them and putting on Google Classroom. So they kind of like, it's easy to understand what I'm supposed to be doing because my teachers have such clear direction and they're doing such a good job of making, making sure that everything is easy to understand.
Awesome, thank you. What, what's been a struggle?
Um, probably the schedule of hybrid, just because some days I'll be like going to sleep a little bit later and then sleeping in and then I'll go to sleep earlier to wake up early again the next day to get ready for school. And so I'm a lot more tired and like kind of cranky the next day and not as productive in school as I usually would be. And then I would also say I feel a lot less connected with my class, obviously, because, I mean, we're doing Zoom calls as well as like the two days that I do see them during hybrid, I can only see half their face and I can't, I can't really be within six feet of them. So I just like, I feel a lot less connected with them and it's harder to do things at home. Like I have limitations for like science projects and art projects because I have to work with the things I have. Like when I did my balloon car project, for example, it kept hitting the wall because I didn't have like a, I didn't have a very good space to be doing it in. So it's hard, like I have a lot more limitations to do things.
You said you like full distance better than hybrid.
Yeah.
Tell them why that is.
I don't really know. It's just like, again, the schedule with hybrid and then I almost feel more connected with my class on Zoom because I'm just like talking to them completely and I can just see their whole face and like, I don't know, it just, I just feel more connected with distance.
Thank you. And the next question, so we as a district or as a middle school for sure, you know, we're looking at transitioning back to that hybrid. Is there anything that you're looking forward to?
I'd say I'm looking forward to seeing people again, just like however I get to see them, just being in person with people. And then also like after school activities, like I'm really looking forward to theater because that's something that I really enjoy. So we're able to do that again, which I'm really excited about. And then I would also say hopefully, fingers crossed, going back fully in person if the numbers stay down and everything kind of stays in order, that, that way we can go back full time.
Great. And this last question, it's probably not a fair question. You know, I'm 37 and I don't know what I want to do when I grow up. You're in sixth grade, a very mature sixth grader, but the last question is, so what are your future plans? What do you want to do?
Well, of course, because I'm a sixth grader, I'm not completely 100% sure on anything yet, but I definitely want to go to a four-year college. I'm looking at Northwestern in St. Paul, but again, no commitments because I'm just in sixth grade and then.
She hasn't signed a commitment letter yet.
I would also love to have a job using my communication skills and I've also really enjoyed health, like when I started fifth grade. And so I'd like to do something that kind of involves like medically helping people. So maybe like a pediatrician or a child therapist, something that I can use both my communication and my love for health.
Awesome, thank you so much. And I just before, you know, we open up to any questions from the board, I do just want to mention Lyric, the daughter of Megan and Jeff Rubel, and she has two sisters in high school. We've got Breely, who's a senior, and we've got Piper, who is in 10th grade.
Yeah, that kind of also helps me with colleges because she's looking at colleges, my senior sister. Do you want to say hi?
I don't need to say hi, hi, everyone. I will say that her high school seniors were a little jealous that she got to share her thoughts with the board because they had opinions they wanted to share too, but we said, too bad, they don't want to hear from you right now, clearly. And just Lyric is the one that matters.
Lots of opinions.
Thank you so much, Lyric. Questions for, for Lyric?
Lyric, this is Tracy Stewie. I don't so much have a question as more of a statement. I don't know what you're going to do when you grow up, but you definitely have to use your communication skills because as a sixth grader, like if I didn't know you were a sixth grader, how you're talking, you definitely have your thoughts organized and maybe I should talk to you and you can teach me a couple of things, but you, you definitely need to use that, that you did awesome.
Hey, Lyric, this is John Carlson. Do you have any outside activities that interest you?
Well, kind of like I said, with the bonus extracurricular activities, I really love theater and acting as well as singing, just like, yeah, being very musical as well as dance. So I guess using my creativity.
Tell John, the tennis coach, tell him that you think you want to play tennis.
Oh yeah, I really want to play tennis when I'm older.
All right, you should look at Gus Davis. I heard they have a pretty good tennis program and a great dean of students office.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. It was, it was our honor and we really appreciate it.
Yep. She said too, maybe she wants to be a school board member when she grows up because the content of your discussion and the Roberts rules was just fascinating for her. She just couldn't get enough of it. It was excellent. What are they doing? What is all this consent agenda approval? I was like, yeah, that's adults meeting, that's fun stuff. All right, say bye. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Graff. We'll move on to our action items for the night. Consider approval of high school course slash program changes for the 2021-2022 school year. Principal Engle, do you want to walk us through that?
Yeah, I would love to. As those of you who have approved these new courses, first of all, I want to say like thanks for making me follow Lyric. My communication skills are not probably quite as strong. You're, you're dead on there, Tracy. Anyway, in, in recent years, we have had, we've had pages upon pages of new courses and course adjustments. If you remember last year, we were revamping the order in which kids went through the science curriculum at the high school. So that was a large part of it. Ever since we have, we started planning and moving into the new high school and splitting from a 712 building into a 912, we've really tried to add courses which that, that new building could, could really showcase and support. Oh, at the same time, while trying to maintain a comprehensive curriculum for, for all students, whether they're four-year college bound or, or taking courses that are more exploratory in nature and trying to perhaps figure out, start for your planning for career. So this year, down from what felt like, you know, 15 new courses every year, we have three new courses. And you guys can read through those obviously on your own. One is an interesting one that's, the training is, is offered through South Central Service Cooperative through the, our Health and Human Services Department would offer that, the emergency medical responder class. That is, that has become a part of the Service Co-op's High Step Academy. As you guys know, we had such an overwhelming number of kids who are interested in health and human services that we were able to hire our own teacher along with, that we share with Tri-City United. And TCU is offering that this year. It's a, it's a very popular course for those kids who have maybe already moved through some of those other High Step classes. The social studies department is interested, interested in offering a AP World History class. I would preface that with saying, most of you know that we've really tried to, we've really tried to ramp up our concurrent enrollment classes in recent years and we add some every single year. And we would also be attempting to add a history class or switch AP History or AP World History to concurrent, but we, we are, we've got a pretty young social studies department. And so we are just waiting for, for some of those rock star teachers to have their masters plus 18 credits in some of those classes in order to have those be concurrent. In the meantime, we've had a, a great interest in, in those students who are college bound to, to better prepare for their junior year, which is a pretty intense year. And so this is an opportunity, all students take World History their sophomore year, but this is a, this is a more advanced opportunity for kids to try out their sophomore year. And then the, the additional concurrent enrollment course that we haven't quite sorted out whether, how we're going to run that in the, in the course catalog yet as in every other year or every third year. But MSU is offering a pop music class, pop music from R&B to MTV. So for those kids who are, who are really interested in checking out more of the, more of the college courses in our music program, that's an opportunity for them. I would also add that because in recent years, we've added so many great electives, we're, we're becoming, and by we, I mostly mean Janice Sikora and Maggie Carlson, but I hired them. So I'm going to, I'm going to claim credit as well. We're becoming smarter about, about offer, not offering every class every single year. So a pop music class isn't going to be available every single year, but for those juniors who maybe took our music appreciation MSU class last year and are still interested in earning some of those credits, perhaps toward their degree, they would have that opportunity at least once every four years during, during their, during their high school career. We also have updated course descriptions here that are just a little slightly different wording. I could also add, last year, we, you guys approved of the new concurrent classes where an intro to art class that's an MSU course as well as a health class, which Chris Volts will be teaching second semester with 30 kids, 30 kids enrolled and the music appreciation class. Mr. Help was approved to teach those through MSU. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Initial discussion? Well, hearing, hearing none, is there a motion to approve those course changes for the 2021-22 school year?
Tracy Stewie, I'll make a motion to approve the courses as presented for the 2021-2022 school year.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. We have a Leonard, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, we will do a roll call. Tim?
Locan's card, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Bill?
Soderland, aye.
Leonard, aye. Ative, I don't believe that your dogs are eligible to vote.
Well, if they, well, if they could, they would, I believe.
They sounded enthusiastic, so that's good. Moving on to action item number two, we are to consider the approval of the 2020-21 World's Best Workforce Goals. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Gronseth.
Thank you. This year, the world's best workforce has been a journey. With the measurements of world's best workforce generally being standardized tests and knowing that the majority of those tests were not taken last year, it's a little hard to report on goals that you didn't have any measurement for. Just speaks to the importance of having measurable goals. It's also, as you remember, you started with achievement and integration last year. And achievement and integration is integrated into the world's best workforce report as well, because the goals are focused on the same five areas. And so that is also part of the report. The state took a while to adjust the world's best workforce plan and form. And basically they've added another box to every single section that says unable to report. And those are goals that are really focused on the standardized tests that we were not, not able to report on. And so as you review that report, you've probably seen that many of the areas say unable to report. And because we generally base our new goals on the baseline data provided by that standardized test, we didn't have that baseline to work off of for, for the next goal. So in many cases, we just pulled those goals forward and that, that is what we have for you this year. And Annette, I know that you have more to add.
Thank you, I always do. The only thing that, that I would, that I would add is as we develop our, our, you can look for changes probably in the career and college readiness section at the high school. As, as times change and, and encouraging all students to, to be four-year college bound rather than look into a two-year school or a technical college or any other internships or apprenticeship ideas, we've really been, been focused on, on maintaining both of those at the high school. And so, so I would say for, well, this is, it's always confusing looking at the world's best workforce report because what you're looking at is our last year's goals. But for, for next year's goals, look to more industry certifications or potentially concurrent enrollment credits earned, because that's been a, a goal of mine every year is to increase those opportunities for kids. And if we could, if we could hold these, these world's best workforce reports side by side, you know, you would just see, you'd see many more concurrent enrollment credits earned for our kids. Therefore, saving our families money, along with industry certifications, that will be, that will also be included as a career and college readiness goal at the high school. And I believe, Mr. Gronseth, correct me if I'm wrong, that we are able to submit more than a single goal for each area.
Yes, we are.
Excellent, thank you. Any discussion, questions? Not hearing any initial discussion. Would someone make a motion to approve the 2020-21 World's Best Workforce Goals? I heard Dixon with a motion.
Second.
Carlson with a second. We will do a roll call. Tim?
Locan's card, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Bill?
Soderland, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries. We will move on to action item number three, which is the second reading of the revisions to the policy manual. This is page 41 in your packets, I believe. It starts on page 41 anyway. Superintendent Gronseth and Member Hager, I would turn it over to you.
Well, as you can see, it is several pages long and there are both additions and deletions. And so the deletions are the old, what we call the old numbers. And the additions are the new MSBA models. We've taken one look at these. I have not received any additional input from, from anybody, either our admin team or board members. And I'm not sure if Member Hager has received any as chair.
No, I haven't heard any, I haven't gotten any input on it either. I, I really am enjoying doing this because it just is a good way to overview all of the different policies. And so it's been really very interesting, but no, I have not heard any comments on it, so I'm hoping that it will be approved.
I did just want to add that as we start replacing these, when you go to our website to look at policies, there will actually be two different numbering systems. There will be our current numbering system and then there will be the new MSBA numbering system. And we will maintain, as we add them, we'll add them to the MSBA model policy section, but within our existing policies, we will have CE policy 102, for example. And then you'll just have to go down to the, the other section and see policy 102 and we'll maintain that kind of double, double system until we get through all of them, which is going to take us a while, but it'll be well worth it.
This is Tracy Stewie. You did say that the admin took a look at that, right? Yes, okay, just wanted to confirm.
Well, again, Members Hager, Soderland, Stewie, thank you so much for your work on that committee thus far and all the work that will happen in 2021 as well. This is, this is going to be immeasurably helpful for the district. With that, is there a motion to approve those revisions to the policy manual? I will make a motion to approve those revisions to the policy manual. Leonard?
Tracy Stewie will second it.
Excellent, we have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Tim?
Locan's card, aye.
Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Bill?
Soderland, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries. Thank you again. That concludes our action items and we will move on to information items.
Yep, one more action item.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry. I, I can't see. We need to consider approval of the MOU with the SPEA, which is incredibly important. So Superintendent Gronseth?
Yes, thank you. You may recall, late this summer, we wrote an MOU with the teachers' union regarding preparation time. And we also shifted the school schedules and all of this in response to COVID. As we have gone along, as you, as you all know, we continue to receive new guidance and there's been new rulings, new executive orders by the governor that have changed some of those requirements. And as we transition into all in-person, we need to make some more adjustments. Because our current MOU only covers us through hybrid model and distance learning model with additional preparation time. What, I believe it was Executive Order 20-103 that had a requirement of an additional 30 minutes of prep time for teachers who are doing both in-person and hybrid learning. And so to allow for that extra 30 minutes of prep time, we needed to have an MOU in place for when we come back to in-person. And as we know, that's only about two weeks away at the elementary level. And so the teachers' union did share the MOU over, over the winter break and voted on that. And I was delivered a signed copy today, so it is ready for the board's approval if you so wish.
Thank you. Any initial, with a motion by Treasurer Carlson?
Locan's card, second.
Vice Chair, Locan's card, second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
So I noticed there were bus times uh, for the release on Fridays. Um, is that correct? I mean, those, it's for Fridays. Does that mean that that uh, middle school and high school will be meeting on Fridays? In hybrid, I mean?
No, it's, this MOU is only while for the in-person model. So when they go to all in-person, that would apply. If they're still in hybrid, they will still have that um, the original MOU language that makes Friday a distance learning day while in hybrid or distance.
Thank you. Good question.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, so just to kind of like recap, and I'm just going to say it real basic. And so maybe if people are watching and they're confused too, but correct me if I'm wrong. So basically, the state has said if you are in, you know, you have to give so much prep time or so many hours of prep time for your teachers, is that correct? And that's a directive coming to us from the state. And once they go back to school full-time, they don't have all those hours because some of those were on Fridays and now they'll have kids on Fridays? Is that kind of a basic understanding?
Yeah, that was, that's perfect.
I talked to her and she told me how to communicate, so.
Perfect. So Fridays will be an early release. And so um, school will let out at, I don't want to say the time because it's different times for middle and high school, but um, for our elementary students that start in two weeks, it would be at one o'clock. And so that would be on Fridays with the exception of like March eighteenth, because uh, that Friday is already workdays, so the early release day becomes a Thursday. And yes, it's uh, basically the executive order when teachers are teaching both hybrid and in-person, which uh, the majority of our teachers will have uh, at least a combination of students even while we're in-person, who are choosing distance learning or maybe uh, using distance learning if they need to quarantine. Um, so we have to allow for that extra thirty minutes of preparation time.
Well, and just, you know, it's kind of, it's a big deal. I mean, people are going to hear that. And obviously, we know that's going to be a hardship for a lot of families, but it's not really a decision that we're making at a local level, really. Um, and it's just something, once again, we're just going to have to grin and bear it. So I say that, and I don't have kids that need that care, but hopefully, people will be able to pull together and make that happen for families.
Thank you, Members Stewie. And I do uh, commend the the district and teachers and admin team for um, again, like we said, doing the, doing the best possible thing that we can. And Fridays are probably less disruptive than Wednesdays or Tuesdays or Mondays. And so that, that went into the thought process uh, here as well. Any further discussion? I believe we have a motion and a second, is that correct? Excellent, uh, so we'll do a roll call. Tim?
Locan's card, I.
Tracy?
Louis, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Mickey?
Hager, I.
Bill?
Soderland, I.
Leonard, I, uh, motion carries. Uh, that concludes our action items for RealZeus, um, and we have one informational item uh, tonight. And that is uh, open enrollment or options uh, and a yearly comparison report. Superintendent Grandseth?
Yes, thank you. And actually, I just realized that um, I watched this very meeting last year uh, in of the St. Peter Board, because I remember this report. Each year, you see a report of students um, that well, basically are enrollments, but we also take a look at students who are opting to come to St. Peter from other school districts, but also students who are going out of our school district for other choices, be it a parochial school or charter school or online school and homes or homeschool. Um, you know, families make choices for a million different reasons um, to fit whatever needs their family has. And I believe that those choices are are good for our community and good for our society. Uh, but we can also learn from those choices and find out more about ourselves and more about what families are looking for. In an environment of a pandemic, I I don't know that we can really truly um, see a typical picture in these numbers. I think districts all across the state are looking at charts that are very similar. We've seen a lot of families making more choices to go to online schools or to do homeschooling or to go to parochial schools because um, frankly, parochial schools don't have to follow things like executive orders um, like we do, or directives from MDE like public schools do. And so um, some of those choices uh, have to do with um, what they're able to offer in in a pandemic environment. And our hope is that we will be doing a lot of outreach to our families as we come back to school and remind them of all of those wonderful classes that Principal Engeldinger was talking about earlier. And the the ways that we can help students uh, prepare for their future in in ways that not all schools can. So um, as you look at this, you will see that we, we too have a number of students um, who have chosen homeschool and online and parochial. Those are really the three um, categories where we've seen uh, the biggest number of students going to. And uh, we'll continue to watch those and and see what kind of choices uh, they make as we all come back to school. Hopefully, uh, many of these families will choose to come back to um, St. Peter schools.
Thank you so much. Um, I have a question. If if I had a student who was eligible to go to kindergarten, but I chose to not uh, start them in kindergarten this year, would they be reflected in this report?
It would depend on what you decided to do instead. Uh, if you decided to can, to do an online program, um, they'd be an online. If, or if you decided to do homeschool officially, it would be on this form. However, kindergarten is not a requirement. And so families could opt to just um, not send them to school yet. And they would, they'll show up next year, um, either as a kindergartner or possibly you've been a first grader, depending on the level of the student and the age.
If I could interrupt for just a minute, um, that is a situation we did hear frequently in the beginning of the school year, especially with summer birthdays, people just called and said, you know what? We've decided we're just going to wait another year. So um, hopefully, we'll see an high influx of students next year in kindergarten.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I mean, as I look at this report and I look at past years, um, and I didn't know there was a pandemic happening, the the data makes sense. And then when you throw in the fact that there's catastrophic upheaval in our society and uh, in education across the country, um, this is, this is pretty incredible, I think. Good job, St. Peter.
Mr. Grandseth, so how many are we down this year compared to last year? I'm not sure which column I'm supposed to be looking at here. Enrollment wise overall.
Sorry, I'm trying to look at a very small screen. Um, so if you look at our, our um, total enrollment, on the very first page on the top.
Oh, yeah, yeah, got it.
Yep, the twenty-one eighty, but that that does include um, early childhood special education.
Um, so I know uh, from being uh, on the MSBA delegate assembly that there is a bill coming forward that you may uh, that hopefully, schools will be able to um, use either this year's numbers for enrollment or last year's numbers uh, for enrollment. And the difference for us is approximately seventy. There are school districts that are over two hundred that are, they're down. And so um, I think that'll have a lot of legislative support and should help us in the end.
Thank you for that. We are, we are also looking at the disaggregated data that includes uh, free and reduced-priced lunch uh, percentages because a lot of our funding is tied to that formula, not necessarily that specific um, student. But they just use that number in a, in a formula to figure out different funding streams uh, that have to do with interventionists, um, English language learners, our title dollars. Come, compensa- uh, compensatory education dollars. Uh, there's athletic dollars, athletic rankings, a lot of things are tied to that percentage. So we're hoping that they'll let us use um, well, basically, it's last year's numbers for next year.
Thank you. Any further questions or conversation on that item? Well, with that, we'll move to reports and uh, building principles.
All right, I have been elected by the group because there has only been one contact, student contact day um, since our last meeting. So I was going to fill you in on all of the things that have taken place in that, that time. We have been busy, though. I do have to admit that. Um, some big things that have happened are that North and South both wrapped up their distance learning days on the Tuesday before break, and we have already started that transition planning process. We started it today with teams really looking at what are the pieces that we need to have in place um, to complete the this quarter. So really looking at, we have a limited amount of time with students when we get them back. What are the things that we need to focus on, um, knowing that um, we're getting students back in clustered groups that they're familiar with. So how do we use that time then to kind of um, acclimate them back to school and prepare them then to meet with the whole group on the nineteenth? Um, as well as what pieces of assessment do we need to still continue to get in there so that we're able to do some grading um, on the eighteenth, which is the the day that the teachers will be doing their report. We will be ready then to welcome students back in the hybrid model on Wednesday. Really, childhood, middle school and high school return to their distance learning schedule today. And another highlight of the day was the co-curricular welcome to winter sport practice, practice teams back into the building today. And I think that's a wrap for the two days.
Thank you very much. Thank you, principals. Uh, Superintendent Grandseth?
Yeah, uh, Happy New Year, everybody. Happy twenty twenty-one. Hopefully, the year ahead of us um, will continue to brighten as we go through it. Uh, two weeks ago, during the school board meeting, we talked about our plan to transition uh, our learning models. And we talked about the regional support team and how we need to stay in contact with them. And we have uh, checked in with them late last week to make sure that we were still on track to move forward as we have planned, and we did get that approval. So um, we will be continuing on the track. Now, that being said, if we all of a sudden see a spike that goes, you know, up to a hundred and uh, seems to be going up quickly, then we may have to change our plans. But for right now, we do have that approval to move forward. So this coming Thursday and Friday, our staff at the middle school and high school and rock band and Hoffman will be planning for a return to the hybrid model starting in January eleventh. And we will also, um, we're still on track, as uh, Principal Oki said, for our elementary students to come back all-in, in-person, uh, January nineteenth. So we are very excited about that. And it is really important to continue all of the protocols and procedures that we've had in place so that we can continue along this, this journey of bringing our students back. And there have been some changes and additional recommendations from the state. It's highly recommended that all of our staff wear masks and shields while they are working with students. And so we will be recommending um, that they do that. So you might see more staff with masks and shields. And uh, if board members are coming into the building as board members, we'd ask you to follow those same protocols that we're asking staff uh, to follow as well. Um, regarding activities, as Principal Oki said, practices started up today. We're looking forward to competitions starting next Thursday, the fourteenth. We have not, however, heard any guidance regarding spectators yet. So we do expect to hear more guidance on that. Well, before, before the fourteenth, at any rate, we're hoping it's this week. And we will share that information out as soon as we know, know more about it. Um, I did want to mention that there is a form that Sarah will be reaching out to our board members with, and our admin team will be taking a look at as well. And that's a conflict of interest form. And this is an area that we need to update some policies, but we're not quite to that policy yet. We'll get there. Uh, but there are some changes that need to be made to that. It is a a federal requirement for our auditing purposes to have a conflict of interest disclosure form signed by our board members and our administrators. And it's really just to avoid any uh, fiduciary conflicts uh, with with board members and and our actions as administrators. So you can be waiting for that from Sarah. We'll get that out to you. So I want to close tonight um, by sharing that I am really, really excited about the coming weeks. I am so looking forward to seeing students in our halls and our classrooms and our buses because we know that there's nothing that really compares to the magic that happens in a classroom or or in a school. And I have to confess that I'm also a little bit worried because the health and the safety of our students and our staff is a priority for all of us. And we will continue to do everything that we can to control this, the spread of COVID nineteen in our schools. But it's going to take all of us to do this. We really need to make some decisions along the way that are going to be difficult. We like staying home when we have symptoms, when we would really rather be at school or missing a practice or missing an activity or not going to a game that we're really hoping to go to. We'll need to keep our distance as much as possible, even though we really want to all sit at the same table and chat just like we used to. And as we come back together, it may seem like things are starting to feel back to normal. Um, but we really need to remember that these protocols and these procedures are meant to protect us and our students and our staff and our families and our neighbors. And without these protocols and procedures, we may see more spread and have to go backwards in our learning models. So I just uh, really remind everyone to be doing those daily checks before you leave for school. Um, make sure that you're healthy, be aware of of what's going on, and uh, follow those protocols and procedures so we can all come back to school full-time and and stay there. So thank you all, and again, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Superintendent Grandseth. Uh, that brings us to board members and around the table. Uh, Tim?
I've got nothing, Ben.
Tracy?
Not really a lot. I'm just very curious and excited for the kids, well, very excited for the elementary people to go back full-time and curious how that's going to all work out. And I be thinking of you guys. Um, and then when we go to the hybrid for the middle school and high school, it's kind of with a, you know, obviously, we want our kids back, but like for the middle school, and I was talking with Sister Graff about this a little bit today too, you know, it's almost this like, well, at least now they get the daily contact with their teachers, albeit virtually, but they do. But they do. When they go to hybrid, they only get it twice a week. And I just like to see us, I don't know what, how far we can push hybrid at the middle school and high school. Like, maybe there's something we can get those kids in a little bit more. Um but obviously, you guys are thinking about that too, but that's just kind of my random thoughts for the evening, I guess.
Good. Drew?
Nothing for tonight. Thank you.
John?
Uh like Tracy, I too was very excited uh that we are starting to transition to more in-person learning, whether it's hybrid or actually in-person. So much so that, Mr. Gronseth, I apologize. I emailed all the principals today just out of elation of the of moving forward into uh uh some more in-person uh instruction. So um good luck to the teachers and uh um congratulations to the school district for continuing to keep the numbers down.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh Vicki uh lost power uh to her phone, so I don't think she's with us. But she made it through the action items and we appreciate the the Herculean effort that she put in uh over technology. So uh Dr. Soderland?
Well, thank you, everybody. Uh I appreciate everything that happened tonight. And I think as a board, I feel united that we're all working together. I am excited that we're getting the kids back in school. I that's that's got to be our top priority. And I appreciate the Superintendent Gronseth's concern. But some way or another, we just have to do everything we can to make this work. So thank you, everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh I don't have too much. I just I just appreciate everyone. And uh I want to thank the board. Uh this has been a really hard year and administrators and superintendent and the fact that we can still have fun at these meetings uh and uh and still be excited and still be focused on kids and still get to hear from students like uh Lyric. Uh that's that's what makes us all worthwhile and I I appreciate all of you and I thank all of you for your commitment uh to the district. Thanks, everybody. Uh we do have some upcoming meetings. We have a policy review committee meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, January fifth at at three P M. And I hope that uh Members uh Stewie and Soderland and Hager can continue to serve on that policy committee uh and do uh continue the great work that they've already done this past year. And then we have a virtual MSBA winter conference Thursdays, January fourteenth, twenty-first and twenty-eighth. So if you have questions about attending, I know Sarah has signed us all up uh and I think provided us links. Um and there was an email with everything uh described there. Um if there are days uh that that we can attend, uh I encourage everyone to to jump in when they can, but understand that schedules are are hard too these days with uh with everything that's going on. And then uh the calendar committee is Wednesday, January twentieth uh at one P M. Uh that's a virtual meeting. And then our study session uh is Monday, February first. Uh and that is at six thirty P M. And uh that is TBD at this point in location uh with a regular school board meeting coming Thursday, February eighteenth at six thirty P M. So with that, uh is there a motion to adjourn?
Tracy Stewie will make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Thank you, Members Stewie.
Second?
Dixon seconds. Thank you. Uh Tim?
Locan's card, aye.
Tracy?
We aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Bill?
Soderland, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.